It's time, we have a quorum. Let's pick up where we left off. Over to Ms. Carmen Khan. Chairman. To follow up on the electronic referral mechanism. Which paragraph? Paragraph two point. Two point three three. The F V H D is supposed to deliver one stop service. I have a question that went unanswered. Which department comes to you or gets your referrals most often? Will the F V H D prioritize linkage with that department? Will the other departments involved also link up their systems with these departments? When you do regular mail, the mail gets lost. And replying to the mail also takes time. When you stick to a non-electronic way in mail. So can the government give us a pledge about taking action on having this electronic referral system? We often work with the Buildings Department and the Fire Services Department. These two departments are responsible for building safety and fire safety and ventilation. So in May this year, we worked out an electronic referral mechanism with the Housing Department. We're making the preparations for the linkage with the F S D. We have talked to the F S D about putting in place electronic referral as soon as we can. Ms. Carmen Khan. The F V H D's reply to audit says that the F S D can only put in place a system in twenty twenty six. The Innovation Technology and Industry Bureau pledged that the upgraded I M smart system, which cost two hundred million dollars, also promised single portal access to all government services. This can show people what one government means. But how come it would take all the way to twenty twenty six for the system to be up and running for the F V H D? Are there plans for other government departments to link their systems with the F V H D's platform? Let's get to this question first. Don't just say the Buildings Department is working on this and then the F S D will have the system ready A S A P. The report says twenty twenty six. Ms. Irene Young, the Buildings Department is already working on this. And just like the independent checking unit of the Housing Bureau, the F S D needs to adjust their systems to make it work. Can we get Mr. Andy Young, Director of Fire Services, to elaborate on this point? We understand Ms. Khan's concerns indeed. It's taking time. We're working on the system E I S, electronic issuance of fire services licenses. The system is almost ready. We have preliminary plans to link it with L M I S. We hope we can get it done by the second quarter next year. In that stage, we can have electronic referral of license applications. The deadline of twenty twenty six involves another system. We now have a system for all fire safety inspections, approval of plans, and user acceptance. We have a fire safety prosecution system, L I F P S. The system is in the first generation. We are upgrading it to the second generation. The twenty twenty six deadline is a deadline for the second stage. And then it will have the E I S plus the L M I S system of the F V H D. We will link up all these systems. Twenty twenty six is the deadline for our internal system. In the second quarter next year, E I S will allow the applicant to view their application through L M I S. And then they can get our fire safety requirements electronically as well as the certificate.
Ms. Carmen Khan. F V H D. What about the other collaborating departments? Have you expedited your timetable in putting in the system? Yes, I'm a director. We are actively following up with the other departments to implement the electronic referring referral system. Because this system can facilitate our work and other departments' work. So we are all geared up to proceed with it expeditiously. Ms. Khan, L I M S two's major function is to track the progress of applications. And there will be the additional reminder function. And this is something positive. But then if there is no electronic referral with other departments, it means you still have to send out letters to the departments. And then for issuing of licenses. Can the department explain more about the professional licenses? Which paragraph are you referring to? In your issuing of license, there is the provisional license being issued. Basically, does it mean that every restaurant will be covered by a provisional license first? Part one refers to provisional restaurant license. Director. For restaurants. Most of the applicants for full license will at the same time apply for provisional licenses because the letter come with more lenient requirements on, say, fire safety and environmental hygiene. So the provisional license is there for applicants to start operating pending the issuing of a full license. So they can do business while applying for a full license. So the provisional license is valid for six months. And we envisage that if the applicant doesn't make amendments to their plans or information, and if everything goes smoothly, I would believe that during the validity period of the provisional license, the applicant can get a full license and can continue with this operation. So in view of this, the applicants will apply both their provisional license and full license at the same time so that they can start their business as soon as possible. And the provisional license will be issued much earlier, faster than the full license, around sixty, sixty working days. In table three. In twenty twenty two, the full license application number is three thousand seven hundred and forty. And provisional licenses, three thousand six hundred and sixty eight. So that means most of the applicants will apply for both types of licenses at the same time. Ms. Khan, in table nine, the average processing time for provisional licenses is like what the department said is around sixty working days. But that is a far cry from what is being found out by the Audit Commission. While the F V H D only calculates the number of licenses applied for and issued in the same time. I hope that you can use the same method for calculating the number of provisional licenses like I proposed. Well, that's all from me, Chairman. Any other member having following questions in part two? Mr. Long. Mr. Louis Long, please. Chairman, the Ms. Khan asked a lot of questions which I intended to ask as well, but I would like to follow up on some questions. In paragraph two point one two of the report, it says that the Audit Commission noted that the F V H D has not made formal guidelines for staff to send reminders to other relevant bureaus and departments and D H Os when there were delays in providing comments to F V H D. Why was there no formal guidelines? Would you devise the guidelines? Director, please. Thank you, Mr. Long, for your question. This is about inviting other policy bureaus and departments and our D H Os to give comments. If there was a stalling, whether we would be issuing or reminders, but the cases vary. And their complexity varies. When we see comments from other departments, the time needed for each case may be different. Maybe we don't need to send reminders sometimes, or our staff need to do is to make a call and seek clarification. So there might not be a need for a hard and fast set of guidelines. Maybe sometimes we need to do local consultation. Especially involving O S A. There might be multiple exchanges and interactions, so it's difficult to set some formal guidelines. Mr. Long, I'm happy to hear what the director said. The guidelines would be too rigid. For communication among departments, maybe there is no need for correspondences all the time. Maybe a call will make things easier. I think that kind of a culture should be encouraged. And then I have another follow-up question. Paragraph twenty two point thirteen, A, Roma Letter four. It says the F V H D had not taken into account the time that F S D would require for handling the cases. While I think the cases involve not only the F S D, would you also take into account the time needed by other departments and policy bureaus? And come to a consensus on a time period agreeable to both parties? Director, we have taken into reference the Audit Commission's recommendation. We should face up to the issue. If departments require longer periods, we should not be imposing our demands unreasonably. We would be reviewing our own internal guidelines and workflow to see what is the reasonable time period to allow departments to give comments. Mr. Long. Next. Paragraph two point seventeen B, and that is page twenty eight of the English report. It says that the it is about the achievement of the performance measures in relation to A V P meetings. Are A V P meetings scheduled but not convened were counted as meeting the target? Why is such a standard being adopted? If A V P meetings were not convened, how come that you were counting them as meeting the target? What is the rationale here? Mr. Ms. Young. We acknowledge that the expression here is not clear. Well, the target means that we have provided the opportunity to arrange for the A V P meetings. As to whether the applicants feel that there is a need to attend the meetings, they might not reflect our service standards. We provide the service, but it's altogether another thing as to whether the applicants would like to use the service. Maybe the expression here is not clear enough. Well, convening meeting, that means that we have provided the service already. So how can that expression be improved in your view? Well, maybe we say that we provide, provided an opportunity for a meeting. Well, we would further consider how we can make the expression clearer. Yeah, Mr. Long, yes, I think you should reconsider how to express this situation. My last question. About the O S A. In Hong Kong, we often talk about making Hong Kong a place attractive to travelers from outside and turning Hong Kong into an international metropolis. Our Frisco Dining will help, definitely. And I notice in paragraph two point four four of the report, page forty four of the English report. A restaurant license may apply for an inclusion of O S A into existing licensed premises. And the processing time for approving this will be fifteen to twenty-three months. But then for applications made concurrently with new restaurant licenses is from nineteen, nineteen months. So there is a big difference between the two periods. How come that the time required for approving new O S A permissions from existing restaurant licensee is so much longer? Well, let me talk about the factors being considered. First, the O S A may, must come under a an area with a permission for operating of an O S A. And then we have to go through the lands department and also the independent checking unit for the housing bureau as well. Now, in actual fact, for addition of O S A into existing license and also for new O S A in new areas. Maybe I could defer to my colleague for sharing her observation. Who will take the question? Ms. Ms. Chow, Senior Superintendent, thank you. Member for your question. For O S A permissions, there are two types of applications. So a restaurant licensee may apply for an inclusion of O S A into his existing premises. And the other type is the applicant has not obtained a license yet. And it would like to submit concurrent applications for new restaurant license and O S A permission. In our procedures, we would have to seek comments from departments for both types of applications, including Buildings Department, F S D, and Planning Department. So for an existing licensee, it may have the license for a number of years and he may apply for an inclusion of an O S A into existing licensed premises. While the situation of the restaurant may have already become different. So hence the longer period for this case in the, in terms of the processing time. I've heard your explanation. But I don't think it's convincing enough. Whether you are talking about an existing licensee or a new applicant. The factors to be taken into account will be the same. The only distinction is that the existing licensee may not provide a complete set of information to the F V H D. But for a brand new applications, very often a complete set of information will be readily furnished to the F V H D. So that involves the internal management of information by the F V H D as well. I think there is room for improvement there as well. Chairman. I may be wrong. And I stand to be corrected by the representative of the H A D here. Would the local public consultation take up the longest period? If we would like to expedite the processing time, which period would be most critical? If we can improve on that critical process, then we can speed up the approval process. So which are the critical stages here? Mr. Long is right. In pointing out that for O S A permission, we will consult the H A D. And very often, local objections may be submitted. We will ask the applicant then to to take measures to handle such objections. So there might be repeated local consultation exercises. So can I defer to the H A D to talk about their observation? H A D, please. Let me talk about our approach upon receiving the F H D's referral. If the F H D thinks it's necessary for the H A D to do local consultation, we would do so. We will consult the stakeholders in the district. As to who are the right stakeholders, while they, maybe they include the district councillors of that district, area committee members, the neighbors of the premises, et cetera. If H A D has, or if F H D has not been categorical about who to consult, we would talk to the F H D again. Say if it is a legal license, we would consult tenants within, living within fifteen meters of the premises. If in the case of an O S A, which may not cause great news, we might only consult the building next door. We will talk to the F V H D anyway. As to the time period, whether it relates to a new applicant or existing licensee, there is no distinction when we conduct the local consultation. We refer to a period of twenty days. Every time F V H D requests for local consultation, twenty working days is the period given to us. So we make no distinction between existing licensee or new applicants in terms of the period for consultation. We would normally give two weeks to the stakeholders to respond. Mr. Long, my follow-up question. After the H A D has conducted consultation, local consultation, views have been received. And if there is objection from stakeholders, is there an appeal mechanism for the applicants? Or is it that if objections are received, you will not proceed with the case further? What would be the follow-up?
Usually, when we receive objections, then we would notify the applicant to see whether measures can be taken. Let's say the objection is that they operate till late at night. Then we would suggest to the applicant to revise their business hours. So this would be some sort of interaction we facilitate to hopefully address the concerns by the objectors. Well, I know that time is almost up. I'd like to ask about paragraph two point three five. And that you basically agree with the audit's view. And just now, we did talk about the internal processing times. Would you consider optimizing it so that those with licenses and new applicants can also be treated fairly? We would continue to optimize our system, especially on information in the tracking of the progress. We would provide timely updates so that applicants would know their progress. And then we would also provide a convenient channel for them to communicate with us. Thank you. Next, Mr. Michael Look.
Thank you. I walked over to the next room for another meeting just now. So I hope I'm not repeating any questions that other members may have asked in two point one eight. It has shown that eight thousand nine hundred forty-five A V P meetings were scheduled in seven hundred seventy-seven days, of which some applicants had attended the meetings held in forty-eight days, which is only six point two percent. So do you know well in advance that there would be no attendees? Or, and then they were just treated as not holding a meeting? Or would everyone be scheduled to attend the meeting? And they would just be sitting there waiting while no one shows up? Well, a member has already asked this question, but Director, you can answer it again. Oh, thank you. Well, two days before the scheduled meeting, we would call the applicant or the representative to ask whether they would attend the meeting. We would not hold the meeting if no one agrees to come. So you're saying that forty, that those forty-eight days, everyone was ready for the meeting. Am I correct? I don't have the information with me right now. Perhaps I can ask my colleague. Do you sort of an idea of how many people attended, one or two, or how many people were at the meeting? Mr. Zhang.
I think around two or three on average. We arranged for a number of A V P meetings on the same day. And maybe some of them did not attend on those forty-eight days. Well, I have a suggestion. I know that many applicants liaises assistance of agents or representatives. Or only some people would attend. Perhaps you could try to consolidate the times. If you arrange ten or people to attend at the same time together, then it might be more efficient than having them come at different times. I'm also concerned with the outside, the O S A application. Because these O S A permissions are very important to the vibes in Hong Kong. In paragraph two point four five, I see that one hundred sixty days were needed for the application. So it's like half a year and it's not very short. And in two point four seven,
And in two point four seven, when there are objections, it would take two hundred forty-seven to five hundred seventy-seven days to handle these objections. That's a very long time, on an average of four hundred thirty-four working days in settling objections. You take into consideration, uh, public holidays, it's more than one and a half years. Or are there any figures on applicants giving up? Or being rejected? Do you provide them with tips on how much time they should consider, and then to provide them with a checklist on the requirements, so that they wouldn't have to come back and forth again with new revisions? Director, we see that there are actually ten cases studied for O S A permissions, and these ten applications examined were quite long, which is quite appropriate for investigation. And these happened during twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, which was during the pandemic. There were many different constraints during that time. When our colleagues need to extend their work, then they may be restricted by COVID restrictions, and sometimes it's difficult for them to locate the applicant or the representative. There are guidelines on our website listing out the important notes for the applicants. And we would suggest that applicants assess their situation before they submit their application. For the ten applications examined, which took a long period of time, was it because of our different bureaus and departments needing more time? Or was it because we needed to seek clarification with stakeholders? Well, that would need to be viewed on an individual basis. How about on the objections? In the audit's report, in paragraph two point five one bracket E, it is suggested that coordination be improved with other relevant bureaus and departments in processing O S A permission applications. So how can you improve this coordination? Do you have any concrete recommendations? How can we really reduce the processing time? Mr. Professor Ling. Well, because each case is different, I would leave it up to the bureaus and departments to implement it. We see that there is a long processing time, but we'll just leave it up to the bureaus and departments to improve the situation. Oh, they basically said that they agree with your comments. So how would you actually improve the situation? Director. When we receive O S A permission applications, we basically clock to the H A D because they would then seek the, or consult the public. There's actually a template we have provided to ask for comments. We are going to liaise with the H A D to try to streamline the process. Or try to standardize the form so that communication could be more smooth. Mr. Look. Do many applicants choose to give up, or do their applications get rejected after such a long period of time? Director, let me defer to my colleague. Mr. Zhang, do you have these figures? Well, I don't have this ready on hand. We can supplement this information after the meeting. This is a very important figure. We want to see the success rate. Because some people from the industry tell me that it's not easy to complete the application. Well, that's all from me for now. Ms. Yuenas Yong.
I'd like to ask about the A V P meeting. The attendance rate is so low, have you considered holding such meetings online or to just remove it? Because you don't really need this A V P meeting, because without this meeting, you would still issue the license. If there are questions or problems, you can just communicate directly with the applicants. You don't need so many public offices to sit there and wait for representatives to show up. Could you actually provide the feasibility in just holding the meeting when needed?
Director, this is a very good suggestion, and we would of course take it into the consideration. If there is no such need, we wouldn't, we shouldn't need to hold such a meeting. We could then ask directly for further information. Oh, yes, because you will need to arrange such a meeting with the applicant. The applicant may not know that you have asked for a meeting, and we don't really know why such a meeting is needed. So I hope that you would consider this further. Any other questions? Mr. Wong.
Well, it seems that layout plans should not be revised after the application is submitted, but it seems that it is quite common practice for layout plans to be revised. Why is there a sudden change, or would your case officers just provide them with comments to help them? Director, well, it is actually quite normal to see revision of layout plans. In the fifty cases that took a long time, those applicants made five hundred sixty-nine revisions. One applicant actually made thirty-seven revisions. And so this is not uncommon, but this is not something we want to see happen. And we remind applicants on our website and in our briefing, not to revise layout plans, because every time they make a revision, then we would need to, then it needs to be approved by different bureaus and departments. Or if they could reduce the revision of layout plans, then it could actually speed up the processing time. Mr. Edmund Wong.
Well, my point is whether the case officers would give recommendations to the applicants, because different case officers may give different suggestions and recommendations. Well, now that there are briefings, or why can't everything be approved and be before the application is submitted? Well, some layout plans, of course, they need to abide by certain requirements. For example, on the requirements set up by the F S D on ventilation, they may need to revise the layout plans to comply with such regulations. But I have heard colleagues say that when the applicants submit their layout plans, they only have a general idea of what they want to do. They haven't thought through it in detail. The premise layout, and so they make the revisions afterwards.
Mr. Edmund Wong. In my understanding, well, after they submit the application, there would be a six-month provisional food license issued. And so actually, it would buy them time. And in response to Ms. Yuenas Yong's question, since they have already a six-month provisional food license, then they wouldn't attend the A V B meeting. And maybe that is one of the reasons why there is such a low attendance rate. Well, going forward, since there's already a valid provisional food license, how can we do something without involving so many bureaus and departments? And many of the applicants may just choose to operate first with a provisional food license. But if they are not able to comply with requirements, yet they're able to receive a professional food license, and then they wouldn't, and they don't need to come to a meeting. There is no cost, even if they don't fulfill any requirements, they still get to operate for six months. And that's a waste of public money. Well, we don't want applicants not to be serious and only apply for the six-month provisional rest food license for those that closes down after the expiration of the provisional food license, then we would prohibit them from doing this again. But then if they continue to revise the layout plans during the application, currently, there is no mechanism in any loss other than a delay in the issuance of a food license. Professional food licenses are more flexible, and there are, there are only basic requirements, and regulations are more relaxed for a provisional food license. All right, I'd like to ask about note seventeen. On the adverse implication. Or can you, if you say that this, how about changing it to specify timeframe within actually have implementation to the delivery of the F H D services? There are many steps in the process, and we would remind them of what they need to do by a certain date, but then this is only for internal reference and for us to monitor the progress. There may be an increase in workload, and there may be different deployment made. And so for each case, we would need to extend certain flexibility. One application may need, only need a few days to confirm the referral. We don't want to just fix a certain period of time. This is only a timetable for internal reference. We don't want to disclose it to the public to cause misunderstanding.
Mr. Edmund Wong. I simply hear no performance pledge. I can see that the department wants to reserve flexibility for itself, but we have to meet public expectations. Each case officer handles their cases as soon as they can. I cannot press you for a performance pledge. But should we give thought to this matter if you don't have enough staff, hire more people? Or when you move things to an electronic platform? The system that is computerized can reduce workload, and that means faster process. Can we have a performance pledge? We need some kind of figure, some sort of pledge. Ms. Irene Young. The application process involves many steps. At critical stages, there are clear performance pledges, say on the F E H D website. After the A V P meeting or without such a meeting, other departments confirm that a license should be granted, we will issue the L O R as soon as possible. Or we get the final notice of compliance, and then we send someone to do site visits within certain days. These are critical stages in the application. For those stages, we have openly available service pledges. Paragraph two point one three. The F E H D receives materials and then it refers the materials to other departments. There are delays. In some cases, the delays are more than ten working days. How are these referral memos sent? How come we get a gap of ten working days between the data receipt and the date of dispatch? Now, before we had the Licensing Management Information System two, we would send memos or fax or email starting from May this year. L I, L M I S two has been in place. We then start up, started doing electronic referral, and that helped address the delays. Mr. Edmund Wong. Email and fax. How come we get ten days of delay with email and fax? They are supposed to be instantaneous. Even regular post takes two to three days, even during COVID. A regular letter takes maybe a week to deliver. Has there been an investigation into why we had the delay? Now that we had the audit, now you have electronic system, you should have mitigated the system. What's the problem? What's the holdup? Ms. Irene Young. This is among the cases of the fifty cases involving long processing time. Indeed, some practices were an ideal. The delays are one example. We looked at the cases. We see discrepancies in the data dispatch and receipt. This happened when we sent something out and when we got something back. This is not ideal. So with the Licensing Management Information System, we want to improve the situation. Mr. Edmund Wong. I get the point about improving the problem with the system in the future. The F E H D continues to work with other departments. You can get the same delays in the future. These are abnormal scenarios. Is there a mechanism to look into why it's a delay of ten working days? It's twenty twenty-three. We believe there should be greater speed in how things are handled. So a question for the director, do we know why there were delays of ten working days? We are aware of such cases. We don't have detailed documentation for each case. For director of audit, for the longest delay is ten working days. Have you found out why the delay? What went wrong with this case? I want to invite my colleagues to tell us more about those cases. Mr. Gabriel Zhang. We tried to look into this case based on the files. We couldn't tell from the trail what led to the delay. It could be that our It could be that our staff had the documents ready for fax. But on the date of the fax, there was a gap. Could it be that your staff had the paper ready, but the papers were left there on the desk? And then ten days later, someone else faxed the document? Could that be the case? This may have been the case. So ten days were wasted senselessly. The staff could have faxed the documents and then no one followed up. This requires follow-up. The Director of Audit should have told you which case that was. You would know who was supposed to fax the documents. Has the staff member involved tell you why? We will investigate the cases, but we cannot tell from the files what led to this delay. We will keep following up on this. There has to be someone who sent the letter. You can tell who was in charge. We have to follow up on who sent this letter, why this person did not fax the documents? Or maybe this person has a secretary. How come the secretary did not do the work? You have all the cases there, the cases were sitting there. The time of the applicant was wasted senselessly and that held back Hong Kong's development, Mr. Edmund Wong. The department has yet to look into such cases in detail. But with such abnormal scenarios, we have to look into what happened. As the chairman said, we should facilitate business. A delay of ten days. Say it's a ten, it's a provisional license. They get forty-five days of rent free and then they go ahead with renovation. But then ten days get wasted in the delay. People wouldn't want to come here to do business. As the chairman said, you may have the staff. The man, the staff member has had the letter ready, but then the superior took days to read through the letter. And that led to the delay in ten years, but that doesn't make sense. Before a document is sent, there's a date trap. And that's a common practice in government departments. I struggle to tell how come we had the ten days of delay. Paragraph two point one three point three. For some referral cases, there were delays of ninety-six days. After the referral, the other party, the other department was unaware of the referral until the third reminder letter. Two point one three, bracket A, item three. What mechanism is in place to ensure the other department receives the referral? In the business world, we have to acknowledge receipt, some, say something like noted with thanks, even if we do not act on the email. So how come ninety-six days later, the other department realizes there was a referral case? What happened? Director. Indeed, this is not ideal. But ever since we put in place the electronic referral system, this kind of situation should not happen again. Because now we have a direct referral mechanism with the department involved. We can refer the request for comments to the other department right away, Mr. Wong. The problem doesn't just go away with a system. The system doesn't solve the problem. The problem shouldn't have come up on day one. What mechanism is there to ensure that the other departments get the information from the FEHD? That's my question. Director. For these fifty cases, they happened in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two. That is before the new system was in place. There were flaws in the old system. And now we have the new system, a new approach. The new approach should help fix the flaws from the past. We have reminded our staff time and again. When they seek the advice of other departments, they have to follow up. If they get no response, even after the deadline, then apart from reminder letters, our staff should call the other departments to find out why, to find out whether clarification is needed. With this new approach, we hope we can fix the flawed approach from the past. Mr. Edmund Wong. This situation warrants an, an improvement to the overall workflow involving not just the FEHD. I hope the new system and new approach can fix at least some of the problems. That's all from me for now. Other questions, comments, Mr. Porter? Is it because of a shortage of messengers in the government? As Mr. Edmund Wong said, it's not about signature, were there people delivering the documents? The director assured us a new system has been in place, LMIS two since May this year. Two point three two. The FEHD told audit about the new system. Other departments responded, let's go through the department. The responses went by one housing department. It's a long response. Housing, Buildings Department, Architecture Services Department. Those are positive responses. Item C, Drainage Services Department. They said they would consider. It's like we still have to plead with them now. Electrical and mechanical services department, they said they were not consulted. Why not consult them? The, for item D, we need a response. Item E, Environmental Protection Department. Again, they are considering it. We still have to persuade them. Item F, Fire Services Department, they can give, they have given a detailed response. They said they have an electronic system. But they didn't say whether it would be linked up with LMIS two or whether they have other options in mind. I would like a clarification now. G, Labor Department, again, they said they were not consulted. Nothing started and then Lens Department, that's item H. Lens Department, they said they were not consulted. Item I, Planning Department. They said they have a system, but did not say whether there would be linkage between systems. We see no protocol. Each department works in its own silo. That may be the case in the past, but the current term government stresses unity, given the secretaries of department. Why do we end up with this awkward situation? Director. When we first put in place a system, we wanted to have electronic platforms up and running quickly. So we started with the departments we have most frequent contact with. That includes the Buildings Department and the ICU of the Housing Bureau. The FSD said they would need more time to prepare their system. The FSD is actively preparing the systems. As for the other departments, we have talked to all those departments. They have all responded favorably. We have to talk to each department about how to link up our systems. This process will take time. But I can let the chairman and members know that all departments are willing to link up the systems with ours soon. Once again, this highlights the necessity of the Audit Commission. I hope that departments that are less than proactive can see the need to link up the systems soon. If needed, we want to find out about whether some departments are dragging their feet and see what we can do. One time-consuming and sticky point. This means sticky or time-consuming for staff and applicant is the revision of plans. Changes to layout plans. There are ventilation plans. What sort of plans need multiple revisions and that lead to unnecessary delays? What sort of plans? Director. It's the layout plan of the premises. Say the food production area and the seating plan. That also includes the ventilation plants. For details, I can invite my colleagues to tell us more. I don't need details. Say for structural plans, laying out where the washrooms, where the kitchens are. Ventilation plants, fire, fire safety installations, those matter. The seating is of course part of the layout plan. Those who have done renovation will know their plans are subject to constant revisions. Someone says the plan isn't good enough, so another change comes along. Is there really a need for a new revised plan, even if the changes are not material, leading to extra workload for everyone? Director. We have tried to streamline the requirements of the layout plans. We have said that the plans don't have to show the minor details. But as for the detail, the core structures, those need to be annotated because they matter for fire safety, fire escape. Ventilation also matters. Those need to be labeled clearly for the FSD to tell whether the ventilation meets fire safety standards. So we have already simplified the requirements about what needs to be labeled clearly. Maybe a small number of applicants submit a very draft, a rough draft, and then they start the business. I don't rule out the possibility of sharp practice, but I believe most applicants are responsible. Neither the applicants nor the agents want to submit a very rough draft. There is little incentive for, to avoid revisions. Save in my trade, in my profession, when we do pleadings, there are plea, holding defenses. That happens, but there are penalties. Because each amendment to the pleadings results in extra costs. That's the area I'm familiar with. But coming back to your case, each revision just goes ahead. There are no extra fees for each, for each revision to layout plans. Is this, is that the case? If not, why not? Why not fees for revisions? Director. We don't have any monetary penalty or disincentive for multiple revisions to layout plans. But the disincentive is that if this applicant goes beyond the validity period for provisional permits or licenses, we can prosecute the applicant. And if it takes a long time and no license is granted, we can revoke the license. So the applicant has to start from scratch. So at that point, there is incentive for the applicant to complete the procedure sooner. As the members said, there is no monetary disincentive or penalty for that.
Thank you. Ultimately, it's that you would revoke the license if they come back again. It doesn't cost too much, right? If, is it possible for them to come back again and again? Is there a mechanism to deter people from making revisions too often? Yes, indeed, there is a mechanism. Yes, we would encourage applicants to apply for a full license as much as possible. We do not allow people to go on with applying for provisional licenses again and again, starting from June in twenty oh six. And if an applicant makes a full license application, time and again after a, a professional license becomes invalid, then they, this is not allowed. When did that start? August twenty oh six. If an applicant is not given a full license, one year after he has received a professional license, the applicant and his partners will not be able to apply for a new license or full license in that premises. Would you consider imposing a fee every time a revised plan is submitted? Given that more manpower is needed to process the revised plans. So every time, if, if there is a variation to the plan, will there be disincentive imposed on the applicant? So that we would not have to put in extra resources to work on the revised plans? Will we consider that and consult the trade? Vice Chairman. I haven't been able to identify which paragraph. There is indeed a paragraph saying that even if the time period has elapsed, there is a grace period. But you haven't told us on what justifications will grace period be granted. So the Audit Commission doesn't know um the justifications for extending the grace period. Am I right in saying this, Director? Yes. We don't want the applicant to start from scratch. When they start making applications, they would already have put in a lot of time and resources. So i, if they come with good justifications, we will be lenient. Say, if the provisional license has become invalid, we would extend or give, grant them a grace period for them to continue with the application for full license. Well, it depends on the circumstances of each case. The audit report said that, that the grace period has been given and the situation is not ideal, we admit. We have reminded the staff to give, to give good justifications for extending the period, the application period. Now, on the referral system, I wonder that there are clear protocols now on uh, which departments should be consulted, under which circumstances? I think the case is clear for, say, the Building Department and the FSD. But then in paragraph two point thirteen, small letter B and then Roman letter one, it is about the EPD. Is that, that the EBD will only give you comments out of goodwill? It is, it is not, it does not have the responsibility to do so. That may be an extreme case. But do you have a clear protocols among departments on which circumstances under which you should consult them? And also the time period for them to give a comment? Yes, indeed, there are. For departments which we have interactions more frequently, we would definitely consult them. For example, for OSA permission, we would definitely consult HAD. For other cases, we will certainly consult FSD and BD. But then for other departments, well, the cases vary and the Deputy Chairman, you referred to the communication with the EPD. the Deputy Chairman, you refer to the communication with the EPD. In normal circumstances, if uh the food factory lies, if we're talking about food factory licenses with meat and pig roasting, we would certainly consult EBT. But for this particular case, why is that there, there are, were uncertainties? Because here, the fresh provision shop license is not connected to the um public sewage system. It was connected to a um soak water or facility and whether um special waste disposal procedures had to be put in place. So that's why for this case, you consulted the EPD. We would not um prohibit colleagues in consulting certain departments under certain circumstances. It's, it is up to the department concern as to whether uh they said they should respond. We should not be rigid in our approach. That should not be the case. It will not do good, uh do any of the applications. Well, for this hearing, we would like to facilitate your operations as much as possible. I, I believe that in most circumstances, the departments will help each other out. But then there are cases where the departments would dodge their responsibility. In this case, the EFD said that I will be helping you out of goodwill. I, I found it quite awkward. So is there a mechanism whereby you would, we try to convince departments who would, are not willing to help you out, to help out? Now, if haven't received a response from the department, after the deadline, we will uh make inquiries with the department concerned. For this particular case, EPD is not, it's not that EBD wasn't unwilling to give comments. It's just that out of the established mechanism, this is not a typical case where they will be consulted. I have another question for the AVP meeting. Many colleagues have asked questions on this meeting. I will not repeat them. Was there a point eight percent? It's is not desirable. Ms Yong asked whether you should actually do away with the meeting altogether. Would you consider instituting a mechanism whereby uh these will be arranged only out of requests of the applicants? Yes, this is a good suggestion. That will be considered. I'm again referring to my own sector. If we enca, we encourage people to do mediation. And then the parties who come back to say whether they will, are willing to do mediation. So that can be a reference uh to you in arranging for AVP meetings. So I think that's all from me. Thank you, Deputy Chairman. On part two, any further question from members? Mr. Edmund Wong. At twen- two and twenty eight, the audit commission accompanied ten inspections to food premises conducted by FEHD. Five, it was found that food businesses were operating prior to the grant of provisional license, i.e. suspected unlicensed food premises. So is it a common phenomenon, two out of ten inspections? So do you have a monitoring mechanism? And for the two cases, uh you said that the cases were not referred to the ROLs for follow-up action. So how do you monitor unlicensed food premises? Director, first on these two cases, we have looked into the records. But for the first case, why was there no referral? It was a case in Tin Mun and the audit accompanied us, us to the inspection on the twenty seventh of June twenty twenty and twenty twenty three. And um a week or so later, the premises were granted a license. So there was no need for referral. The business can operate. The other case is in Chin Wan. In that case, the inspection uh date was the twenty seventh of June twenty twenty three. And ultimately, it was referred to the um regional license office on the twelfth of July for uh follow-up. For the RLO, upon receipt of the referral, uh instituted prosecution right away. The RLOs were not only made aware of these premises after inspections, is not the case. Um in our workflow, you can, you may recall that once you receive the application for license, the uh licensing office will open a file and within a several days' time, it will consult the DHOs as to whether there is repeated application and so on. So the uh R D H Os uh were um aware of the applications uh in the early days and files were opened and inspections were also made. And for the two cases, the case in Tin Mun, the Tin Mun DHO did not wait for the inspection of the RLO and the audit. Uh also um prosecuted unlicensed food business in April and June. And the same goes for the case in Tin Mun. Actually, before the inspection, action was already taken. Mr. Wong, well, you have prosecuted them in April and June and they are still up and running in June, late June. So what's the point of prosecuting them? Even for provisional licenses, uh the applicants still have to meet with fire safety and building requirements. Now prosecutions were taken out in April and June. How come that the uh food premises were still operating in uh mid-June? How can you step, clamp down on such unlicensed operations? Uh Director, we attach importance to the matter. So staff in the DHO have an inspection duty. And they take a risk-based approach in managing the food premises within their districts. And prosecution is one of the ways to follow up on such operations. We would inspect and take enforcement action against unlicensed food premises every now and then. What do you mean by a risk-based approach? The cases have to be vetted by the buildings department and FSD to make sure that the relevant requirements are met. How come that the FEHD is qualified to say that a certain uh unlicensed food premises comes with a lower risk? So what kind of risk-based approach are you taking? We would deploy our um resources in the district and try to make inspections and enforce the law as much as we can. Well, what, Mr. Wong, is that you know that they are unlicensed, but then you are still putting up with them, their operations? You said you were concerned about uh safety issues, issues relating to ventilation and building safety and so on. Uh well, so how long will it take for you to actually shut down their business if they are found to be non-compliant? The DHOs will uh do our very best, uh using our resources. What I meant is that when you spot that this is an unlicensed food premise, you would um take a prosecution against them. So how long would they be allowed to still operate? Can I defer to my colleague to talk about the, the approach in the, in inspections and enforcement actions? Mr. Wang, please. Chairman, I'd like to add, for food premises without a license and still operate, uh and operating, our uh DHO staff will uh take enforcement action and take our prosecution. Uh we will, well, based on the risk they are associated with, we will uh step up the frequency of prosecution. There are two types. If they are applying for a food uh business license, we will prosecute them once every month. So, but then if the operators uh are not applying for a license, we would prosecute them once every week. And then there are other rules. If they are applying for a license, uh if say that they have, they were, they applied for a license three months ago and the LRO still is not uh issued, we will then take our prosecution once every week. Now, if the LRO is not issued within three months, then these will be prosecuted on a weekly basis. We try to enhance our deterrent effect. And then in other cases, if they have received the LOR, but then they're still unable to comply with the LRO in six months, they will be prosecuted on a weekly basis again. And then for another case, if the provisional uh food license expires a year after six months and if the food license is still outstanding uh three months later, um they will be prosecuted on a weekly basis. So that's how um we go about our ways of prosecuting them. So are we talking a fine or what when you, when they are successfully prosecuted? Well, the uh fine will be imposed after a court has handed down its judgment. But the court then will take into reference on the number of convictions and the penalty or the fine level will increase accordingly. So if the uh food premises have been prosecuted uh for four times, what will happen? Well, then they will have a four summonses. They have to appear in court for four times, yes. Very often, the court will handle the four um, the four tickets or four, four penalty tickets uh at one go. Mr. Wong, I'll thank the administration for explaining your follow-up action. Now I understand your approach. So for provisional license holder, um certain measures be taken against them. Now, for an unlicensed food premise, if there is a fire and somebody got get killed, who should be held accountable? Now, if FSD says okay and the buildings department says okay, then who will be held responsible? Now, if it is unlicensed food premises and a fire uh happens and the IFSD uh hasn't approved the premises, who should be held accountable then? So you are responsible for food safety, buildings department are, is responsible for building safety, FSD is responsible for fire safety. But if the premises are not licensed, who should be held accountable if a fire uh happens? Well, I think the member has made very good suggestion. We will uh consider them. Can I put the question directly to the Director of Fire Services? For unlicensed food premises, which have not received yet a professional license, has the FEHD referred such cases to you in the past two years? And has, have they asked you to make inspections on such unlicensed food premises?
Director, thank you. Well, at this moment, we do not have such a referral mechanism. Or just now, they said that they would um prosecute those unlicensed premises. But at the moment, we do not have such a referral mechanism. Mr. Edmund Wong. Well, yes. Well, the FSD can only take action when it has been referred to them. And the premises actually do not have protection as well. The um actually, our fire officers would also be at risk if they need to go in to put out a fire without knowing any of the layout plans. Uh well, this is a problem I don't think we can address at the moment. You may need to follow up. I'd like to follow up on the, on June twenty seventh, uh when the FEHD uh went to investigate. But then on June twenty eighth, the provisional food license was issued. So I mean, but then on June twenty seventh, that place still doesn't have a license. So how can you assume that it is operating with a license, with a license issued one day later? Well, actually, on the next day, the premise is already a licensed premise. So there is no such situation of an unlicensed premise being in operation. The DHO has already noticed that uh someone is operating uh without a license and so an investigation has been made and some, and is, summons were issued. Well, I, that is not the point. My point is that you actually investigated on June twenty seventh and the license was only issued on June twenty eighth. So that means that it was operating without a license on the day of your investigation. So you should have a mechanism. So I don't understand why you don't follow up on the case because it was operating without a license on the day you went. Well, on enforcement, well, we look at the actual situation and the evidence collected. Well, we would try to understand why this case was not uh taken to the uh DHO on the day. But I just want you to note the fact that the premise became licensed the day right after. Well, so it's much like when the FSD goes down to say that uh the fire in, fire service installation is not adequate. Well, the next day, the equipment is put in, is installed, but that doesn't mean that they complied with the regulations on the day of inspection. So I just want to know whether this is a common phenomenon. Director, well, I don't have the figures of unlicensed premises in operation or the prosecution figures. Well, well, on this case of um not referring the case because the premise became licensed a day after inspection, I hope that you could also give me a figure on whether there are other similar cases. Do you have such a figure? We would go back and come back with a response. Any other questions on this chapter? Ms. Carmen Ken.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow on page thirty six on needing to speed up the OSA permission applications. Were there only four hundred and five um approvals made? So compared to the thousands of uh li- food licenses, so it is actually not a large number. The audit found that the, it has something to do with the handling time and that it must be uh sped up. Well, our culture, tourism also need to be developed speedily. There's actually a huge discrepancy between the different times. The FEHD expressed that a simple application will only take forty-six working days. A, an operating license, um seeking uh for OSA permission. seeking for O S A permission would take around more twenty days. But then, but then some of them, it would take twenty to thirty months. And then for new applications, it might take nineteen months. So it is not very satisfactory. I want to ask about note thirty-four. There's a standard pro forma provided by H A D being used since two oh nine, but that's two oh nine. Would you actually initiate measures to try to standardize the pro forma or actually speed up the vetting? And in the response in paragraph two point five three, the Director of Food and Environmental Hygiene generally agrees with the audit recommendations. So I want to know what has been done so far. Thank you. On paragraph D on, on page thirty-six, on collecting feedback, we work with the H A D and we have consulted the H A D. In note thirty-four, the standard pro forma provided by H A D used since two oh nine has already streamlined much of the process. But we can, or there is still room for improvement. So after discussing with the H A D, we are going to update the standard pro forma and standardize and enhance the pro forma so as to step up the facilitation between the various departments. And we are going to ensure that we would revise the timeframe, and we are continuing working on that. The audit report has provided us with many concrete recommendations, and we will continue to optimize our work in that area. Thank you. Director, of the application for O S A. Also, when you apply it together with a new application, then actually, the time would be shorter. But then for processing times for approving application for existing licenses, it will take a longer time. I don't understand why. Because the existing license premises should have already complied with all the F S D and other requirements. They are just putting tables outside for alfresco dining. So what is the logic behind this?
We actually, to us, it doesn't matter which application they go for. If you permit, Chairman, I could defer to my colleague on why such a situation has been observed. Ms. Chow.
I'd like all of you to turn to appendix E. So there is a time taken for processing applications for O S A permissions. For existing licensed premises, other than complying with certain legal requirements inside, they also need to comply with regulations for the outdoor area. For new applications, when we are approving both applications, it may take a shorter time. But it doesn't mean that the processing time for a licensed premise would take longer. It really depends on consult, on public consultation by the H A D. When objections are received, the applicant or the license holder may need to come back with suggestions to address the concerns. But if there are no objections received and for some premises, they are private premises, they are only renting private premises, and the time needed may be shorter. It doesn't mean that the time needed for new applications would be shorter. It's just that there may be a slight reduction in working days when the applications are made together.
You mean that there is no priority for existing license premises and new applications? But I don't understand the logic behind that. You, the H A D helps you to conduct a public consultation. So the H A D consults are public the same way for both existing license premises and new premises?
Well, most people would think that for an existing license premises, it would have complied with all regulations, and so it should take a shorter time.
I would understand that if the time for processing such an O S A permission would be shorter. I really don't understand why a new application would take a shorter time. Can you give me an example?
Chairman, it's all up to the consultation results by the H A D. If there are objections, then the applicant or the license holder would need to come up with improvement measures. For example, the nearby residents think business hours too long. And so they may need to cut down business hours. New applications may not see the same problem. This is actually a problem that existing license holders may encounter. So that is why we need this. This all depends on the consultation done by the H A D. Any follow-up on part two?
Mr. Lewis Long. Chairman, I just have a quick question to confirm my understanding of what the director said. So for an applicant with a professional food license, you talked about one that has hold it for fifteen months. So does that mean that if within fifteen months, the holder still cannot receive a full license, would not be able to operate again at the same premise? I'm just talking, I'm referring to paragraph three point two bracket B, that if the previous license holder within twelve months was not issued a full license after the professional food license expired, would not be allowed to operate at that particular premise. You mean the premise itself is used as a standard? It's not, it has nothing to do with the applicant, with the person? It's just a premise that is being restricted? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes, this is only for the premise.
Would that actually be a loophole? The fifteen months would allow the professional license holder to operate temporarily without getting a full license? So that means this person can just operate for fifteen months and then move to another premise and to start this process all over again? Or we wouldn't be able to regulate this person? Well, let me first extend the meeting by fifteen minutes to allow time for the director to take this question. Well, we don't want there to be an abuse of provisional food license, but we also consider convenience to license holders. We need to try to strike a balance. The applicant, if he wants to move to another premise and apply for a professional license again and start all over again, this is an operation cost. So we are just actually targeting the abuse of measures. Thank you. Any other questions on part two? If not, Ms. Carmen Ken, how about we commence part three at our next meeting? This concludes our discussion today. We would notify you the date of the next meeting at a later date. Thank you all for attending. Thank you.